If we can reconvene our meeting to open session, the board has been an executive session since 6 o'clock to discuss a litigation matter. We could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have introductions?
Dave Hurst.
Jonathan Fitch-Byrne.
Catherine Natto.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Christine Beck.
Willow Bear.
Wendy Sampson.
And Judy Kehoe.
And Meredith Moriarty is joining us virtually this evening. First up on the agenda is the approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the October 20th, 2021 regular board meeting.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next are our meeting reports. And first up is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I wanted to provide a quick update. The district COVID reopening committee met last week and we did make a few changes to our protocols. We did send this out already about siblings having to stay home if they had a family member who was symptomatic. At the beginning of the year, Albany County Department of Health had recommended that, provided guidance indicating that students who aren't a family and there's someone who's symptomatic should remain out of school. And the committee decided to moving ahead that we would not require asymptomatic family members or siblings to stay home. We looked at the data. Several other districts had made changes and so it's not a requirement. So we put that information out. I think parents are very happy about that change. So that was one change the committee made. Also, there were several questions recently, probably with the upcoming holidays, about travel protocols. And we decided that we would follow the CDC guidance for international travel, but we would not follow the domestic travel guidance, in part because they didn't distinguish between where you were traveling. It was just domestic travel. So whether you were driving over the state to Massachusetts or New Jersey versus flying. So that was another change. We also talked about facility use. We've talked about this a few times and we decided that we would open our schools to B.C. student groups only, so not adult use, not outside groups, but for our own students. And the plan is to begin use of that, the facilities around December 1st. I know Len Keys, our athletic director, had expressed wanting to get the winter sports season up and going. And he was working with O and M to determine what facilities would be accessible for the organization. So we are doing that with their facilities application. They have to also submit what their safety protocols are, so we make sure they're in line with what we require. And then finally, vaccinations for students ages five to 11 have been approved. I had a call with the Albany County Department of Health and Jay Patel, who owns Crestwood Pharmacy today, our school physician, Joanne Menraff, and a couple others to talk about hosting a vaccine clinic here for our students. So currently the vaccinations are dispersed through Albany County Department of Health. So we are tentatively planning to hold a clinic, but we don't have a date yet. We met with them. We're going to collect some data from families about how many would be interested in participating. Should we offer a clinic here? How many of them would prefer to go to their pediatricians? And they also are planning, the Department of Health, to also offer boosters as well as just the three Pfizer, Moderna, for anyone who hasn't been vaccinated yet. So we are working on the plans for that. Ideally, if we could get a clinic together prior to Thanksgiving, that would be ideal because then students would have their second dose prior to the holiday break and it would be just two weeks out from that vacation. But that might be wishful thinking, but that's our current planning. I also want to highlight a few students, varsity tennis team, if you've not been following them. They earned a ticket to Flushing Meadows for the State High School Association Girls' Tennis Championship. The B.C. team finished its regular season 15-0, which is great. And the championships are going to be held this Friday at Flushing Meadows, the home of the U.S. Open. So how exciting is that for them? Congratulations and good luck. We also had six distinguished high school students who were recently selected as some of the best student musicians in the state. Four have been invited to showcase their talents as part of the New York State Musical Association Conference in Rochester in December, and two have been selected as alternates. I'd like to congratulate Orin Carlson-Lee, Daniel Janston, Ryan Keg, William Wu, and Peyton Roach and Michael Z. Also, if you saw today, we have a student at the high school who seems to be not only an entrepreneur, but a very good science, computer science student. Nikolas Radoshevich is a junior, and he created a website called earthstripes.org to help people learn more about the impacts of climate change. There's a story on our website and I would encourage everyone to check it out. He received a perfect score on the AP Computer Science Principles exam he took last spring. So I'd like to congratulate him and maybe you can find some holiday gifts on his website. And that's my report.
Anybody have questions for Jody?
Catherine does.
Catherine. Just a quick question. Could you just clarify, when you said the facilities for B.C. student groups, we're talking about just groups entirely comprised of B.C. students? Is that correct?
Correct.
Cool. Thank you.
Yep.
Next up is our board report. And first, I just wanted to thank everybody who was involved with the homecoming dance, which took place after it was postponed a week because of weather issues. But it sounds like all the kids had a great time and I think it was really important for them to be able to get together and socialize. So I appreciate everybody who, whose efforts made that happen. And then I just wanted to briefly address the Spotlight article that came out last week regarding some outdated terminology that was used during our last meeting. I know that Jonathan wanted to speak directly to it, but I just wanted to comment that I know that education and work on social justice issues is, it's a lifelong process. And we all make mistakes and the important thing is to keep the conversation going so that we can learn from those mistakes and that we can continue to improve and do better. So Jonathan, I'll turn over to you.
I want to apologize to the community and to anyone that was offended or hurt by my description of an Asian-American girl in the book Eyes That Kiss. I honestly had no idea and I was mortified to learn that the "O" word was offensive to some. If I had been aware, I never would have used it. I chose my current public service in education because education is important for a culturally rich and diverse and inclusive society. I've learned from this experience and it will not be repeated.
Thank you, Jonathan. That's all I have this evening, if anyone else has anything that they'd like to share at this point.
I do. I'd just like to say that I was able to attend an Ultimate Frisbee game this past weekend. It was held on Halloween in the morning. And a lot of B.C. students who play Ultimate from eighth grade through the high school grades had a great time facing off against some Niskiuna Ultimate Frisbee players, also in that wide age range. And a good time was had by all. The fun thing about Frisbee is that even if the opposing team scores and makes a point, everybody claps, no matter, you know, no matter, everybody is just amazed by the talent that some of these young Frisbee players show on the field. I wanted to just put that out there, that there's a lot of good club activities that are going on this year after a long time of not being able to play. So everybody's very happy about that.
Thanks, Wendy. Catherine?
And on the theme of, you know, things that haven't happened in a while, there were tons of Halloween celebrations at the elementary schools throughout the district. And I was super excited to go to the trunk or treat over at Elsmere Elementary, which was awesome and really well-supported by the community and put together by the hard-working folks at the PTO over there. I know that there were events at other, the district schools as well. And so just congratulations to everybody who thought creatively, worked so hard, and pulled off some really great events that were just so fun for our families and our students.
Thanks, Catherine.
I had the opportunity to attend the NISBA Law Conference. This year, it's, they recorded it because it was done virtually. And it's available if anyone wants to take a look. Some of the information, especially related to vaccinations, exemptions for medical or other excuses, medical or religious excuses, those were covered pretty well, as were a number of other items about keeping it safe. So it's something that I would encourage people to listen to if you have the time.
Great. Thanks, Jonathan. All right. Next up on our agenda are our student reports. Do we have anybody from the high school student senate?
Hi, I'm Sophia Socha, the student senate president. We have no updates from the past two weeks. We've just been working on the same things, as well as the holiday caring and sharing food drive is coming up. That's, I can take any questions.
The holiday drive is December 18th. That's the scheduled date currently.
What, what do you, what projects do you have coming up for?
Um, sorry. We're currently working on a courtyard outside of the guidance center for students to have lunch when the weather gets nicer. Our supervisor, Mr. Irons, as well as I believe Mr. Domell, has a meeting with these district architects to look further into logistical plans. And we are, the senate is working on fundraising for picnic benches and things of that sort right now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Have a good night. Thank you.
And I don't think we have anybody from the middle school student council with us tonight, but I do hear that we might be seeing them soon. Next on the agenda is our presentation this evening on the role of school resource officers in Bethlehem.
I gotta put this up so I can see. There's the conference meeting too.
Yeah.
Mine did the same thing.
Oh, Brittany had so much pressure.
I just keep saying, hi, Brittany.
Here we go. We knew you could do it.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we are thrilled to be able to give you a presentation, which is an update on the district's and the town's school resource officers program. We are joined tonight by Dave Domell and Mike Klugman from the high school and the middle school, and our school resource officers as well. So the district has had an SRO presence at our schools for 35 years, since 1986. The SROs are employees of the town of Bethlehem. They have extensive training and based on that training are prepared to perform the very unique responsibilities of an officer working in tandem with the school district. Can you advance to the next slide, please? At this time, we have two school resource officers assigned to the district. Although this program has been in place for many years, the district only recently entered into a formal agreement with the town as of July 1st, 2018. The agreement, as you would expect, defines the roles and the responsibilities, and then also specifies the fees for the services that are provided to the district. Within the fees, there are two separate components. One is a fixed fee for the year for the SRO services. And then there is an hourly fee for any special police details that are requested by the district. So the special details are not necessarily performed by the school resource officer, but for instance, it could be an officer who might help with traffic or crowd control, for instance, if we're hosting a larger-scale event. We do not have crossing guards covered within this agreement. Crossing guards are town employees and are not paid for by the district. As part of the agreement, each year, those fees do increase, but I would note that the fees do not represent the full cost of the officers, recognizing essentially that there are mutual benefits to both the town and to the school district. The costs are shared by both parties. As will be described in greater detail during the presentation itself, there are key distinctions between the matters that are handled by the police and matters that are handled by the school. Essentially, if there are any discipline matters, those are handled by the district. And if there are any criminal matters, those are handled by the police. In addition, there are certain roles that the SROs perform in our schools. And for instance, they provide age-appropriate educational programs throughout our school buildings. They provide support to students who might be facing an issue of concern and are looking for an officer to speak with. They can do investigations into criminal activity and of course, overall protection of the school community as a whole. So that is just a quick recap of the legal framework for those services. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Domell.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Dave Domell, the high school principal. I'll be doing a majority of the talking this evening on the presentation that will encompass grades K through 12. However, Mike Klugman is here, who's the middle school principal. Ms. Diana Regan, who is one of our elementary principals, is here, where we could answer questions at the end if needed. And before I get started through my presentation, I would just like to introduce Detective Mike Bourbon, who's here with us tonight. He works with me at the high school as our school resource officer. And Mike Whiteley, is that Sergeant, correct? Sergeant Mike Whiteley, I used to call him Detective Mike Whiteley. He was for years and years at the middle school as the SRO and is still a very invaluable resource to us here in Bethlehem Central School District. So, Mike?
Hello and good evening. Again, my name is Mike Bourbon. I work in the Community Service Unit at the Bethlehem Police Department. I am a lifelong resident of the town of Bethlehem. And I'm here tonight to give you a little bit about my background and my qualifications. When a lot of people discuss the school resource officer position, they're concerned about the quality of candidate and the quality of person that is inside their educational system. As a parent, I would be concerned about that as well. So what I'm here right now to do is give you a little bit of background about myself. I'm right now in my 20th year at the town of Bethlehem Police Department. I've been assigned to road patrol for many years, and most recently in the detective unit. And with that said, I work right now in the Community Service Outreach Program that does a lot of training within the community. We do outreach to not only working in the school as a school resource officer, but we deal with investigations of the elderly, those who have mental deficits or considered handicaps. And we also deal with animal investigations, animal cruelty, abuse situations. And we also deal with animal investigations, animal cruelty, abuse situations, but we really specify or we really specifically address juvenile crime in our unit. And specifically, that's why I'm here at the town of Bethlehem in this role as a school resource officer. I began my career back, actually graduating from CBA after I attended up until eighth grade at the Bethlehem Central Middle School here. And furthermore, I went on to SUNY Albany where I received a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in criminal justice and graduated summa cum laude. After that, I went on as a state investigator with the Racing and Wagering Board. I further my investigative career with the Child Protective Service Unit in Rensselaer County as an investigative caseworker. And then after doing that job for two years, I came over here, back to my roots in the town of Bethlehem with the Bethlehem Police Department. And with that said, at the Bethlehem Police Department, I have a couple of roles. One of my roles is, is to teach defensive tactics at the Zone 5 Law Enforcement Training Center. I not only teach defensive tactics there, but I give updates and I assist members of our own department in doing proper techniques that are lawful and are consistent with the laws currently that we have in place. Furthermore, I'm also an instructor for the mentally ill and handicapped and specifically I provide mental health training to our department, also at the Zone 5 Law Enforcement Academy when they need me. That training is very important for here at my role in the high school. We deal with a lot of situations where we have those who have mental crisis. They're considered 941s and I assist the counselors, the social workers, the teachers, the administrative staff and being able to help out in dealing with situations of crisis. And with that said, I would like to just basically turn this over and have Sergeant Mike Whitley introduce himself and about his role in Bethlehem Police Department.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sergeant Mike Whitley. I'm currently running the afternoon shift as a supervisor. So you're probably wondering why I'm here, but for those of you that have been around a long time like I have, I started with the Bethlehem School District as an SRO in 2006. I taught DARE, primarily a DARE instructor for the district for three years before I got promoted to detective in 2009, where I was stationed at the middle school as a SRO until I got promoted in 2019. So I was one of the longest running SROs for the police department. I was asked today to come up and talk today to write a little overview. And it's, you know, what I'm going to talk about specifically is our training. And it's a little bit, you know, poignant for me to do this because I am an instructor with the State of New York Police Juvenile Officers Association. I've been associated with that association for probably about the 13 years that I've been an SRO. I was, I'm a past president of the association and I teach yearly to SROs, juvenile officers statewide. I also provide juvenile justice training to the recruits in the Zone 5 Academy. So provide, you know, teach the new incoming police officers how you deal with juveniles, not only arresting, but also investigations where they are victims and having to deal with that difficult task. The one thing that we require the SROs to have before, you know, as soon as possible, is to have a school resource officer training. It's a 40-hour course. It's certified by the Department of Criminal Justice Services here in New York State. It's a curriculum that is really renewed and updated and I was asked by the state to assist in updating our curriculum. We also have a juvenile officer certification, which again is certified by the State of New York. And that takes the basics of, you know, dealing with juveniles and the legal aspects and the specific and crises that are specific to juveniles, where we have our school resource officers, which teaches us how to interact with students, how to interact with parents, how to present classroom presentations, PowerPoint presentations, write lesson plans and such like that. We also have advanced for basic and advanced SRO for juvenile officers and everything else. So we continue our education. Once those, each class there is 40 hours, so it's a full long week. And then once that continues, we have continuing education classes. Again, it's about 40 hours. We take current trends, anything from drug use to cell phone issues to social media issues or what have you, and we provide the updates so that the SROs across the state as well as here in Bethlehem have the information necessary to provide support to not only the parents, but also the students and faculty. And that's all I've got for that, so I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Domell.
Thank you Mike and Mike. I'm going to be going over, like I said, K through 12. I'm going to hit on, highlight a couple of these points, but also making sure that you all understand, everything's always consistently evolving when working with our SROs and community groups, support groups. What you're going to see in here has evolved in the last few years and will continue to do so through feedback we get from students, teachers, community members. So nothing in here you see is static. In fact, a lot of these, these pieces, these bullet points have changed to address the current needs, the current trends of our students and our community. To add to the K5, as you see up here, our school, Detective Bourbon and Detective Cobb were both at the trunk or treat that I know was mentioned before. So they're always willing to get involved and that's something we're really trying to reinforce with our students is the involvement with our SROs in areas even outside of the formal classroom setting and school setting. I'd like to, you know, highlight over in the high school side, the 9 through 12 side, you see the mock crash that's there. That is something that we do around the prom, ball time. They assist with us with other emergency personnel to actually do a full on mock crash, you know, in our parking lot area out here. And we alternate years, so we'll do it, one year we'll do a mock crash and the next year we'll try to do a guest speaker. I just actually found out this year, we're lucky enough with the SROs and the Bethlehem Police Union will be supporting us in getting Chris Heron here. We plan to have him here before we went out with the pandemic. And if you don't know who Chris Heron is, he was a professional basketball player who became addicted to opioids and has a remarkable story. If you look him up, it's great. We're very excited about having him here in the spring. And so they're also supporting us in those areas as well. Ready if you want to go to the next slide, please? So as I said, in the 9 through 12, which I'll speak to, and you can kind of bridge through the other bullet points, I think that it's important for you to know that as, as they are here for the students, they're just as much here for the adults in the building as well. You know, one of the things that I do periodically in faculty meetings is I will bring the SROs into our faculty meetings. They will address our staff on issues related to social media trends, anything related to drugs that they're seeing. There was a huge issue, as we all know, with vapes that continues to be an issue that many of our staff were not really aware of. And it was very important to have that information to support the staff and keep the students safe. So it's not, you know, it's not just a student thing, it's not just a safety thing, it's as much an educational piece. In 2010, the Dignity for All Students Act was signed and with that act came, you know, it expanded, it expanded what we really felt we had to, how we supported students. It wasn't really just, it went on the halls of the school here, but outside. So having the ability to have information supports outside of this building, to respond to incidents that could create a hostile environment within the building became essential. We rely on our school resource officers for a lot of that immediate contact, information of things and events that are taking place outside of the school, things related to cyberbullying, situations related to cyberbullying, harassment. We've had, most recently, there was a case of harassment that was going on at our school that we needed support from our SROs, to students within the building and administration and counselors. And that bridge becomes very essential to something as significant as an act such as the Dignity for All Students Act. In order for us to really do what that act is telling us, we need that support outside Now for me, as a high school principal, the amount of events, athletic events, dances, proms, et cetera, that take place, I don't think people truly understand or can really appreciate the logistics behind that, the concerns for safety behind that, unless you're actually doing the job. And, you know, I think it's important for you to know the amount of work and support that goes in behind the scenes that the SROs are involved in, really make an impact on keeping everyone safe at all these events. Several years ago, we had our ball up at, senior ball up at SPAC. There was a concert that of course happened to be the same night up there, which always complicates things. And to complicate matters even worse, there was threats of gang violence that were supposed to take place that were filtered down from the FBI and it came to our, the Bethlehem Police Department, our SROs. The logistics behind that and making sure everybody was safe was unbelievable. And without them and without their support in that and communicating with the outside agencies, I'm pretty sure I probably would have canceled that event. So that's just one instance of the, you know, from the smallest event to the largest scale event, to the smallest threat, safety concern to the largest, they're consistently, you know, supporting us. The Choices Program, which is at the middle school that Mike can talk about, talk to, speak to, has really made it, has that been three years now, Mike, or is it four years? Three or four years our students have participated on, has made a tremendous impact on our middle schoolers. And our counselors, and I have a counselor here with me tonight, Mr. Darnell Douglas, who will speak at the end, but they're always in communication with our counselors, supporting with mental health resources, as you heard from the two officers. And they're a liaison between school and emergency response organizations. And what I mean by liaison is it's not just an understanding of what the other organizations are doing, but it's an immediate response. We can get, we can get communication to from in a very timely manner, which obviously is essential in any emergency. To expand a little bit on the safety piece, we have a raptor system at each one of our schools. And what a raptor system does is it requires visitors to check in, scan their license, identification, and there's alerts that can come up with this system. And if someone's flagged, for example, there's a reason why they're flagged, an immediate, in the raptor system, an immediate response goes out to anyone that's logged into the system, such as administrators, SROs. So if at one of our front desks, for example, we had somebody that was tagged by the US Marshals and there was an immediate flag that went to our SRO administration and it was able to be dealt with at the front without this person entering the building. So that's something that's been put in the last four or five years that again is supported through our SROs with administration. I'll go through a couple of the bullets at the bottom here, but you know, I want to make it, I want to make it understood that in all these events, it's me, it's the administration seeking out the SROs. And if you see in the last slide here, I know there's a concern at times about, you know, an officer in the building and, and I think, I want to make it clear that they're in the building to help, help our staff, to help our students. They're not here to, you know, have oversight, they're not here to insert themselves, assert themselves. They're really here to support me, the kids and the district. And they're tremendous individuals in terms of doing what we ask them. If there's something that is bothering students and we ask them to fix it or do something different or support, there's no questions asked, they do it. So that being said, I'd like to let, I believe Mr. Douglas would like to share, you know, his interactions with our SROs from a counselor's perspective. And Mr. Douglas was also involved with the town reform for, for police as well, so.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me? You should have called it the mic, mic and mic, because there's three mics here. Yeah, there's too many days, too many mics in this town. So, good evening. My name is Darnell Douglas. I'm here to speak on behalf of my role as a school counselor who has worked with the SRO. I'm also a resident of this community and I've been a member of the Bethlehem Police Reform. And I just so happen to be black. To be quite honest, I'm not sure why we're here. I'm not sure why we're spending the time talking about the SROs. Right? We have been talking about this issue for the past year and I feel like we are wasting time not addressing real change in this community. Right? So some of the questions I've asked for the past year is, why do we spend so much time keeping bringing up the concept of the SRO? Right? I've clearly said, are we talking about a national issue or an issue that's happening in Bethlehem? And some of the responses that I've gotten is, SROs do more harm than good. Students of color are feeling uncomfortable and unsafe being in the schools with an armed SRO. Then I've also heard, white male administrators and SROs need to be a good role model for white male students so that we don't learn to be anti-racist. And the one that I've heard the most is, we need to listen to communities of color on this topic, which I find ironic because every time I try to talk, I feel like I'm silenced. I would do my, address my perspective, being a person of color who also grew up in this community, who also work at the school. But before I do that, I just want to, I wanted to let you know that I went around the school yesterday and was just polling some of the students of color, right? Randomly. They don't know why I was asking them, but I was asking them, do you know if there's SRO here? Some said yes, some said I have no idea where the SRO is. Right? So then I said, an SRO, a school resource officer, I'm just a police officer. And they said, oh. And I said, okay, well, do you know where they, where they're located? Most of them said no. Right? Then I asked them, I said, if you, I said, put them in front of you, could you point them out? One said yes. Right? So this goes back to my question, why are we having a conversation about students of color feeling unsafe in this community or unsafe in the school when the small number, I'll admit it, a small number of students don't even know that they exist in the first place. Right? As a counselor, so from my perspective, like this is only where I can speak from, right? From my perspective, I work closely with the SROs. And some of the things that we've had to work together is involves suicide or ideation. So if a student is thinking about committing suicide, sometimes they have information for, I have this information and I'm able to work with them and the families to get them help. Right? Child pornography, right? And then suicide by the police. That's when a student is trying to antagonize the police so that way they're killed by the police. Right? So when I say, I'm not anti-police or pro-police, I'm anti-conversation. And I keep trying to say, let's have a conversation, but it feels like we're not having conversations. We're just stuck in, we've got to be either this side or that side. And that, if we as adults can't have conversations, then how can we educate our kids to have better conversations? Right? So I'm going to address my concerns about how we build about real change. First of all, if you look in the room, mostly everyone here is white, other than myself and one student. Right? That's telling because this community is 92% right. We don't have any people of color or black people or brown people in power positions. No principals, no assistant principals, no supervisors, no town board members, no school board members. So how can we build about real change if we don't have anyone that looks different than us in these power positions? Right? So I think we as a community need to ask, do we really want change or we just want to have, keep, keep having trivial conversations about change? Why don't we have conversations about, knowing the school taxes, knowing the property taxes? So we get more diversity so that way we can have a real change in this community?
Thank you. Oh.
I wanted to make sure, before I go ahead, that nobody else over there has something they wanted to, you guys are good? Okay. Before we have questions and discussion, and I'm sure that there are a number of questions that people want to ask, I did want to first acknowledge that we had a number of written comments that came into the board that I know everybody saw. And I believe there are, there's at least one, maybe more, people in the audience tonight who would like to specifically address this issue. So, at Jonathan's suggestion, I would recommend that we hear from them now, before we have our, have a discussion on this, because I think it just makes more sense. So, if we have anybody in the audience who would like to address the board specifically on the School Resource Officer issue, come on up. And if you could state your name, please, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Matt Loosella. I actually graduated from Bethlehem in 2011. I wrote a lot, but I'm not going to read everything that I wrote, but I think what Darnell brought up about the fact that 92% of this community is white, is a part of the issue that I actually brought up in what I wrote here, because he did ask, "Does, do national issues matter to Bethlehem?" And besides the fact that Bethlehem is a part of this nation, I would actually say that since de facto segregation is still an issue in this nation, and since the most, the most segregated part of our nation is the Northeast, which Bethlehem is a part of, and since SROs contribute and are a product of segregation, I would say that, yeah, national issues should matter in Bethlehem, when Bethlehem is actually a part of those issues. So, around the nation, there have been studies since 1953, when the first SRO program came about, that show that, you know, yeah, black students are 2.3 times more likely to receive a referral to law enforcement, or be subject to a school-related arrest by SROs. As white students, students with disabilities are almost three times more likely to be arrested or referred to law enforcement by SROs than their non-disabled peers. SROs are a major contributor to the school-to-prison pipeline, and students who get arrested and put into the system are more likely to be pushed out of school permanently, failed gradually, and will end or end up in juvenile or adult prisons. And as far as whether SROs keep schools safe, there has not been, in the almost 70 years since SROs have been about, since SROs have been around, one study or piece of evidence that definitively shows that SROs actually keep schools safer. In fact, there's actually, there's actually studies that prove that they don't. One study examined over 160 incidents at schools, including 25 school shootings, and found that not one of those school shootings, school shootings was ended by an SRO returning fire. In fact, the majority of them were ended by a non-armed, non-law enforcement staff member restraining the shooter. Also in 2018, an analysis by the Washington Post, of almost 200 incidents of gun violence in schools, found that there were only two out of 200, two times where an SRO successfully intervened. And we can't forget that during the Parkland shooting, that school's SRO actually ran outside and stayed outside of the building for 45 minutes, actually over 45 minutes, knowing that there was an active shooter inside. And as far as Dare goes, Dare is historically ineffective at teaching what drug use, teaching about drug use, what it actually is, a public health crisis. I remember growing up, listening to Dare programs, and being told that I should fear drugs, because I could be arrested and branded a criminal, not because they are unhealthy, or why they are unhealthy, or that they could lead to addiction, which is a disease. All I ever heard growing up was, "Don't do drugs, because people who do drugs are the bad guys, and you don't want to be a bad guy." And I think Darnell also brought up the point that, nobody really knows what the SROs, or who the SROs are in school, which I think is pretty telling. If they're supposed to be teaching, why don't students know who they are, or where they are? And I never really noticed them all that much, except for walking around the halls with their gun prominently displayed on their hip. And I actually know several incidents where my peers were disciplined, and SROs were involved in those disciplinary, non-criminal disciplinary discussions. So, I would encourage that if you move forward with the SRO program, I think you should clearly define the role of SROs in the Bethlehem schools, which outlines a very specific set of duties that the SRO must perform, and a clear set of goals for SROs and the Dare program, because I think one of the things we found in the police reform process is that that's not very clear. I think you should also establish a method to annually collect data regarding SROs, their interactions with students, members of referrals to SROs, arrests made by SROs, and the nature of the arrests, searches conducted, success or failure in meeting and setting the goals, and more, and ensure that the collected data is presented to the school board on an annual basis. And I think you should survey the staff, parents, and most importantly, the students, to see how they feel about SROs, or I guess if they even know that they exist. And I think you should require the SROs complete implicit bias and/or anti-racism training, and de-escalation training. You should provide students with a proactive instruction in regards to searches, questioning, confiscation, and to establish all of the above, I would ask that you create an inclusive, not-all-white committee made up of parents, staff, students, a number of law enforcement, and experts on education and SROs, to discuss the framework of SROs going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly, is it possible to get a copy of what he was reading, so we can have it in the record?
If you're willing to provide it, if you would like to email the board a copy of your notes, so that we have it in the record, if you're comfortable doing that. Do we have anybody else who would like to address this issue?
Yes, my name is Ted Smith, 32-year resident of the town of Bethlehem. Two children have gone through the school system here, and my wife was an elementary school librarian in Elsmere. I follow very closely the reform and reinvention work that was done over the summer, I'm sorry, over the course of last winter and spring, and addressing the mandates of Andrew Cuomo, his governor's, call to evaluate their local police force. Very interesting stuff, and I hope every board member here has taken the opportunity to read the published report, and, most importantly, the suggestions, recommendations regarding the School Resource Officer. So with that said, I'm going to, hopefully in two minutes, get through my comments in the form of questions. Is the SRO program an anachronism? Worse, is the SRO a solution looking for a problem that our secondary schools do not We were told that the Bethlehem Central School District instituted the SRO program in 1986. Hence, the SRO predates the Safe Schools legislation initiated by George Pataki's administration as a response to the Columbine tragedy of 1999. Department of Criminal Justice Services only references the training courses mentioned for SROs, but provides no curriculum content and standards for instruction. So I was pleased to hear there is some more detail, but it's not available to the public, apparently, because I could not find it. At any rate, trainings are outsourced to other entities, and these entities compete through an RFP to offer these trainings. So, one of the qualifications and quality of the curriculum being offered to the police officers who are being trained for SRO and Dare programs. Now, NICED, through Commissioner Regulations, does not overtly state the SRO or Dare programs are to be a part of the public schools. There is a joint report entitled, "The Framework for State and Successful Schools," and it is referenced there. In a 19-page report, it elaborates on essentials of the principal, school-employed mental health professionals, school counselors, school psychologists, and school social workers, but devotes only two paragraphs in this 19-page report to the SRO, and says nothing about Dare. The above report does state that schools also should carefully weigh the unique needs of their communities when determining the need to hire additional security personnel or school resource officers. Well, apparently, this was done over 20 years ago, doesn't need to be done again. Is the SRO an effective school resource? What evidence is available for purposes of program evaluation? What are the stated and measurable goals of the program? What actual data exists that can measure the program and the police officer's effectiveness? What administrator is charged with supervising and then evaluating this officer's activities? Now, these were questions raised last winter. We are told that the Bethlehem Police Department officers provide instruction. Is it appropriate to use the term instructor? In connection with the associated officers in the school buildings? They are, in fact, highly qualified police officers, as we heard the resume of one of the gentlemen. But they are not highly qualified instructors, educators, school counselors, or school social workers. Does the Board of Education insist on continuing with the SR program for the sake of a positive relationship with the Bethlehem Police Department? That was sort of an issue trying to be figured out by last winter's committee. But that begs for consideration, in my judgment, to the Bethlehem Police Department of a highly qualified social worker. Whoops. Therefore, that begs for consideration of the appointment to the BPD of a highly qualified social worker designated and certified as a peace officer. That is something that DCJS recognizes. A title recognized, supervised by the Bethlehem Police Department, he or she can be a highly qualified professional resource for the schools if needed, but more importantly, into the addition of the schools, they become a resource to the Bethlehem community. So, that was something raised, again, last winter. As such, this would mean that the peace officer would not be carrying a gun into our school buildings. It would address the objections of many community members and BCSD parents to having and carrying firearms in the school in the presence of children. And this brings me to the concern of armed police officers in the school, whether it's the SRO or the Dare program. Now, again, raised in some comments last winter was the issue of school safety, and the police officers saying, "Well, we do our work with our guns on." But shouldn't the schools be safe in the first place? Following the Columbine shootings in 1999, each school was mandated to develop and implement a school security plan to meet its own unique circumstances. Is the school leadership suggesting that this is not the case? Are the current school building plans lacking? Now, realistically, no school building can ever be perfectly safe, but to suggest that the presence of an SRO in the high school or middle school will make it safe is a false assurance to staff, parents, and students. Just as I cannot prove that an SRO is not a deterrent, neither can be proven that their presence is deterrent. For that matter, neither can the Dare officer's physical presence in the Eagle Elementary School prevent a tragedy from occurring in the Elsmere School. What I'm saying is, one person, two people can't be everywhere. So, it's a false assurance that this is providing safety. Protecting our schools means letting go of the things that we want to work, and accepting that such efforts do more harm than good. And I'll repeat some of the statistics, in 197 instances of gun violence at U.S. schools since 1999, SROs interviewed successfully in only three instances, according to Congressional Research Service. That's a 1.5 success rate, 1.5% success rate. Arming the Bethlehem police officers when they are inside our schools is a decision, apparently, of the Bethlehem Police Department chief. Other districts or their building leaders forbid guns in their school buildings. Why are guns permitted in this school district when there's a better alternative? That is to say, if you want a police presence here, consider hiring a peace officer who does not carry a gun. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Katie Yezzy. First, I want to thank the Bethlehem Police Department and the district staff for the presentation this evening, to take a step toward clear communication and transparency about the partnership between the police and the school district formed in the making of the SRO and the Dare programs. I'm speaking tonight as a community member, a lifelong educator, and a parent of two BCSD students. I'm also speaking as someone who served on the Police Reform Committee in Bethlehem, and on a subcommittee dedicated to examining the SRO and Dare programs. While I'm encouraged by the move to transparency, I'm calling on the Bethlehem Police Department and district staff involved in this program to respond to and take action on the recommendations of the Reform Committee. What we asked was that those involved in the SRO program within the district first lay out need areas within the schools and school communities that the program seeks to address. What are the issues identified? What are the gaps that schools are facing in terms of being able to meet the needs of our children's safety and well-being? Having established that, we asked the district to seek the services that are best suited to meet those needs. This may be with the Bethlehem Police Department and/or other agencies. Also, for that partnership to exist with BPD and the school district, it may require SRO, but it may also require something different. It may not look like that program. For whatever the programming is that is put in place to meet the identified needs, we ask that the district lay out clear goals for the program and program partners against which you can measure success. I believe this is not an unusual request. Programming typically stems from an identified need, then is established with clear goals for the program. In our work on the committee, we found that everyone we spoke to who's involved in the SRO program articulated different and sometimes competing goals for having SROs in the school. This evening, we did not hear the goals for what SROs are intended to accomplish and why. We heard what they focus on, what their roles are, and what they do, but these are not goals. The district has clearly demonstrated the importance of using data. You use data to drive goal-setting, decision-making, and evaluation, and improvement of programs. For example, this evening, one focus stated was to teach students about safety and crime prevention. How can we turn that into a goal? What data can we What data can we collect that tells us how we are doing? Currently, with no goals in place for the program, there's no systematic way to chart the success of the program. While many believe DARE to be outdated, and there is research which clearly outlines this, there's no process for the program evaluation and therefore improvement. And this evening, we even heard references to success of certain programs, the impact of certain programs, the popularity of certain programs. To my knowledge, and as a part of this committee, we were unable to find any systematic collection of data around any of these programs, which would lead me to believe that the success and the impact shared this evening was anecdotal rather than based on concerted effort to collect data. We ask that the district engage in a thoughtful process of data collection, which allows for parent and student voice in identifying the results of and deciding the future of these programs. While on the committee, it became clear to me that there are teachers and students who feel less safe being around armed SROs, in addition to students and teachers who feel more safe. There is more work to be done to understand the extent of this sentiment and to see what could be done to support feelings of safety for all students in our schools. It also became clear to me that there is little accountability for this program broadly. My final request is that as you move forward in this work, you involve community members and students to make the process transparent and inclusive. Encourage you all, encourage you and community members to read the Police Reform Report. It's located on the town website for additional research and information on DARE and SROs and their efficacy. Regrettably, none of our committee's recommendations appear to have had an impact on the presentation this evening. I believe that moving forward, the district has a responsibility to at least respond to, if not implement, the recommendations from our committee around SROs. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Tuck. I've been a resident of Bethlehem for a little over twenty years, and my son is a graduate of this district, and we're very proud of all that he's received from this district. I'd like to say a few words just about the DARE program tonight. And I'm not here to, I'm here to express some concerns, but not to disparage the good intentions and the good work of the people involved in the program and people who spoke earlier about the program, some of whom are my friends and my neighbors. But I do want to give the Board information to consider regarding our overall approach to students and their education about substance abuse. Some of you know I've been directing a substance abuse program for over thirty years with a fair number of clients, both adults and children and teenagers, who come from Bethlehem. As a director of a program, it's my job to take a critical look at my own program in seeing what works and what doesn't work. The only way it can grow, of course, is with honest and ongoing evaluations. And in the schools, we rigorously evaluate our students and many of our programs, but I'm not sure that the DARE program has also received rigorous evaluations. Even as far back as 2012, the Town of Bethlehem Police Department budgetary advisory team saw the need and called for a proper evaluation of our DARE program. For decades nationwide, the DARE programs have been controversial. The controversy came after many peer-reviewed studies proved that the program was ineffective and, in some cases, even counterproductive. The federal government then pulled back millions of dollars in funding from the DARE programs. The program was forced then to reinvent itself, and it did so around 2002, but even with those reforms, there are some studies that continue to show the program as a whole is rather questionable. While the DARE program has reached about seventy-five percent of school districts nationwide, the program unfortunately has never been backed by quality scientific evidence. Sometimes, the program refers to itself as evidence-based, but researchers have pointed out that the evidence cited is not scientifically sound. For years, the DARE program has had an ongoing request on our town website, asking for the Bethlehem community to make donations to it, and I haven't been able to find anything about the accounting of those donations or if any donations were in fact made. I hope the school board will find that out for us, see what happened to those donations, where they're going over the years. But referring to the DARE program, researchers have stated that policymakers, such as the Board, should make it a, quote, "priority" to investigate the effectiveness of the program and to find out what measures for youth are most relevant in warding off drug abuse and addiction. The researchers further called on policymakers to be specific as to the standards that they're going to use when considering any prevention program. And of course, as educators, as community members, as parents, we want prevention programs in our schools. Unfortunately, there's numerous high-quality programs that have been reviewed by organizations such as the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the Department of Health and Human Services, the Department of Education, the National Institute of Drug Abuse, and the Office of Juvenile Justice. So I request that the Board begins a rigorous evaluation process of our prevention program and of other prevention programs to see what works best for our students and what may be best in the future. And if you do this, I would be more than happy to share with you a fully researched report that I found that lists numerous programs, prevention programs, as well as their evaluations by those organizations that I've just mentioned. Thank you very much for your time and your efforts.
Thank you. Do we have anybody? Oh, I see one more.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Correa. I'm a parent in the district of two children, and I do want to start by thanking Detectives Burden and Sergeant Whiteley for their service and for coming to present to us. And I want to make it clear that I have no intention of impugning your intentions or your motives, your professionalism. I thank you for the service that you provided. But I am here to urge the Board to use funds more effectively on addressing racism and inequity rather than spending them on the SRO program and to express my opposition to continuing the SRO program as it stands now. Data show that the current generation of children has some of the lowest crime rates in history, and yet they also show that the presence of school resource officers leads to an increased arrest, but levels of arrest, often for minor infractions. We also, as we've heard from previous speakers, the presence of SROs leads to an increase in the school-to-prison pipeline. There are several national associations that represent school-based mental health professionals, including the American School Counselors Association, the School Social Work Association of America, and the National Association of School Psychologists. They all recommend that funding be used to decrease ratios of students to school-based mental health professionals. None of them recommend spending funding on embedding law enforcement officers in schools instead. In fact, we heard a lot about what the school resource officers do tonight. We heard about them being resources for individuals in crisis, and yet we also heard Mr. Douglas when he did his informal study of, or survey of students of color. Many of the students didn't even know who the school resource officers are, or where to find them, or what they do. So I don't think that if those students were in crisis, that the school resource officers would be the resource that they would go to. Detective Burden described mental health crisis interventions, but this is specifically the kind of situation that's better served by school-based mental health professionals than by law enforcement officers. Mr. Douglas described school resource officers being involved in issues of suicidal ideation. Again, this is a, this is a mental health crisis, not a law enforcement issue, and I would prefer to have more school-based mental health professionals available to students in such crises. Sergeant Mike Whiteley described advanced training that was, that is designed to make law enforcement officers more like school-based mental health professionals or more like teachers, but we have professionals who are already highly trained in those fields, and I would prefer that our funds be used to put the right people in those roles. In some way, I urge the Board of Education not to rely on the opinion of the law enforcement officers or even on the heroic efforts of the single black staff member who was here to speak. To understand the many experiences and perspectives of BIPOC students and community members, I urge the Board to listen to the Reform Committee, as Kate asked, to make a real effort to hear the needs of our BIPOC students and their families and to use the right resources to address the actual needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the Board for questions to our presenters.
I'm ready to go.
Go ahead, Christine.
So thank you to all the community members who came out and spoke and to the Bethlehem SROs that are in our schools to give the presentation. I guess I was under the impression that we were getting an overview of the SRO program. I was not expecting the community members to come out with these type of observations. And I think there were some really good observations that you guys, everybody presented in regards to awareness, students being aware of the SROs and who they are in the building, because I didn't, you know, Darnell talking about some students being aware of who they are and some not. I think there's an opportunity for us to make, you know, awareness more present of who they are. But Darnell is a guidance counselor in our school, and he's representing the students that he serves, and he's indicating that he thinks there's a benefit to the SROs. And I'm one of the few school board members who have been on the school board for eight years, and we've evaluated the program. What, do you remember, Judy, what year we've reevaluated the program?
I think it was back around the time we did the agreement, 2018?
So not that long ago, we reviewed the program and the effectiveness of it and determined it would be best suited for the SROs to be in the school. And so that was a panel of people within the schools, reevaluating the program, talking to the school board, and, you know, we agreed that we thought we would bring them on. And being a parent also here, I've been to many of the DARE program activities, and also, as a board member, I've been involved at many schools where I've gone in and watched the students speak about drugs and the effects of drugs and what it can do to you. And maybe we can do surveys of sixth graders to see what they thought of the program. Did it add any benefit? Because we also need to see what they think. Did they think it was a benefit? I always thought that they looked really happy, and they were engaged, and they were proud to speak and read their papers if they were selected. I know when my kids were in school, everybody knew Officer Whiteley. His presence was always known everywhere. And I don't see, I hear what you're saying. I just don't see, maybe the studies that you're reading are not comparable to the district that we're in, or the community needs are different. And we also live in an environment now where students had 9/11, they've seen Columbine, they've seen Parkland, they've seen Sandy Hook. And unless we ask the students how they feel about guns in the school, I just feel a lot of different issues being addressed: gun control, budgetary things, resources. But I feel like the school has done a really good job of implementing all of those services to make this great team: social workers, guidance counselors, psychological services. And I'm not seeing or hearing the same issues that the community presented, and I'm not saying that they're not there, and maybe there are some things that we need to look into and address, which makes sense. And the other thing, though, that I just wanted to point out is by my career choice, I'm an auditor, and so I go in and I look at policies and procedures to make sure they're effective. And, but not everything is quantitative. There are benefits to things that are just qualitative. So not everything has something that's going to be measurable, and some things should be measurable, but not everything is going to be measurable. And I think that we need to look at those things and look at both the benefits that can be measured and those that can't, but there's both.
Can I just interject on one thing that might help, that might answer some questions that I anticipate board members have? We, last spring, I think it was in the spring, we actually talked a little bit about DARE. We talked about our K-12 wellness program and looking at how DARE fits in. We did, we have, as a district, had discussions with the Bethlehem Police about the fact that some of what's in that curriculum is outdated, it's not really current, and when Dave Hurst did that presentation, I think he did a nice little visual like he usually does, DARE was a part of that overall K-12, and where does that fit in, in those initiatives? So I don't think there's any disagreement that the DARE program as it exists currently is not exactly what we want, so that is something we've already been addressing. I also do think it's important, several people referenced the town report, and the district was not represented in the town committee. There were some conversations. I know Mr. Klugman went to one meeting, Mr. Douglas attended, but we did provide Supervisor Van Luven with some of the information that, to be honest, I don't think was reflected in the report, nor did the district receive the report until Holly you shared it.
Catherine?
So, I mean, a couple of questions, just to start off with. You referenced a program evaluation of the SROs in 2017 or 2018, and was there a report or was there some additional outcome from that aside from renewing a contract?
We didn't, we didn't have a contract with the Bethlehem Police.
Oh, sorry, that was when you began, I'm sorry.
Correct. So we defined what the roles of the SROs were versus what the district does. Our attorneys helped draft that with guidance, so there were clear roles and expectations in addition to the monetary piece.
Okay. So that was, so that was better defining, but when Christine was talking about evaluating the program, I was just wondering.
They were presenting it and talking about the benefits of having them in-house versus, you know, paying them separately to the Bethlehem Police.
It was a board presentation similar to this, with the roles, different roles. At one point, the district did have three SROs. We had one at the middle school, one at the high school, this years ago, and there was one, I think, was that, where's Mike Whiteley? You were the DARE officer, right? He started out, and he just did the DARE program. And then, since then, it's moved to the two officers in the middle school. SRO does the DARE program.
Great, thank you. And then, oh, I'm so sorry, if that's me. Thank you. And then you mentioned that the district is addressing how to update DARE or deal with outdated content that was discussed. How has that proceeded or how is that happening?
Do you want to talk about the wellness?
Sure. So we have a K-12 Wellness Committee that is looking at all wellness curriculum K-12, and DARE is just a small piece of that. We met last spring with Sergeant Whiteley to review what the DARE program looked like, and to be honest, he expressed his concerns over some of the content and the datedness of it and the, how there's, you know, certain issues that are, like, so cell phones was not necessarily addressed as much as it should be. Cyberbullying was not necessarily addressed as much as it should be. So, you know, there is a recognition on their part also that their curriculum there needs to be updated, so maybe moving forward, it's using the SROs as a support in those areas but not even necessarily running a DARE program because that's sort of a branded program, but still utilizing them. And also within that, you know, over the last few years, we've added, you know, every building now has a coordinated care team, so every elementary school has a social worker, has a psychologist, has a school counselor. Our high school has multiple counselors, in New York, multiple counselors, multiple social workers, and multiple psychologists. Those are our students' go-to people. So it's a little bit of a mischaracterization when people say, "Well, the students don't even know who the school resource officer is, so they wouldn't know to go to them." They're not meant to be the first person a student goes to by any means, right? Students, when they have issues, they should be going to their council, they should be going to the social worker, they should be going to the psychologist, they should be going to the school principal or assistant principal. They should not be going to the school resource officer right away. So for students not to know who they are isn't necessarily an issue because they're there to support who the student should be going to first, right? So if you're not in need of their supports, they are sort of flying under the radar. If they haven't happened to push into your social studies class to talk about constitutional law, you might not know who they are. But that's not to say that their role is vital within the schools, but it's a supporting role. So to characterize them as sort of the first line for students to be going to or that they're the first person that's involved in investigation, that's not true. And if you listen to Dave's presentation, there's a separate, there's a very distinct role that they play. They do not get involved until it's... a very distinct role that they play. They do not get involved until it sort of crosses over that line to where the school administration, it's beyond their scope of what they can do, right? Because it does pass into the leader. So I just want to be really careful that this is part of a much larger picture. They're not on an island by themselves, they're not the first line. They are here to support all of our other programs, just like all of our other programs support one another. It's part of that big K-12 wellness piece. I hope that kind of clarifies.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Christine.
I didn't mean the awareness of them so they could reach out to them for support. I meant awareness. If they're walking down a hall and they're carrying a gun, kids are aware that they're in the building.
No, I was referring to a couple of comments in the community where that students don't know who they are, so how would they go to them for help? And that's not the intent. Right? Students should not be going directly necessarily to them for help. That's why we have counselors, that's why we have social workers, that's why we have psychologists.
Thank you. And then what is, what is the, outside of the Bethlehem Police Department chain of accountability, which I think, you know, we could go to them for more information, what is the chain of accountability for SROs within the buildings?
So part of when we drafted the agreement was to be specific about what were the roles and responsibilities and what, for protection, both for the district and for the police officers as well. You know, you don't want to cross over that line where you're interfering in a matter that might be legal as a district, or they're interfering in just a code of conduct issue. But, you know, we talked about SRO program, we have two officers.
Yeah.
So clearly, if there was an issue where one were, I'll use Mike Bourbon, just because he's retiring soon, if he were not following protocol, if he were interfering, then that could come to me. It could, I would obviously work with the Town of Bethlehem on it, because they are Bethlehem employees. But, you know, we would deal with that just as we would any other situation. If a staff member wasn't addressing a situation correctly, we would have a conversation about what the expectations are. But because it's a combined effort with the Town of Bethlehem and the district, it would probably be a joint conversation. We've been very fortunate over the years. I mean, I've been here almost 20 years, and the town has been very good about placing SROs here who really want to work with students, who have the ability to really connect with students, have good relationships. I know, you know, from having been in the middle school as principal for a while, when Mike was there, and even before that, Bruce Oliver, they'd be in the lunchrooms and just talking and chatting with kids. I mean, that's not always the case when you work with larger police organizations. Sometimes districts don't have much of a say in who is in the buildings, and I think that's very different. And the police department here, under Chief Corsi and under Gina now, have been very good about making sure the police officers who are assigned to the schools, I would say, for, you know, lack of a better term, are very kid-friendly.
Got it. And there were some questions from the public about goals of the program beyond the roles itself. And were those outlined in the agreement in 2018?
No, there's no specific goals. I don't know if the town has anything, Mike, or if you guys have anything like that. No.
Okay. And then it's, we've been asked to, by members of the public here and on email, to convene a committee to do some of the deeper dive and deeper analysis in the program. And as a new board member, I don't know what the protocol is for kicking off something along those lines.
And if so, that's a request, I'm sorry, can somebody-
You know, one thing I wonder is whether, I know there is a DEI committee meeting coming up, I believe next week or the following week.
Next week.
And I wonder if that would be a good place to address that issue, because it is a committee that involves a lot of, you know, different stakeholders. And maybe it would be a place to form like a subcommittee to look into the issue.
The committee itself is supposed to, I think the next steps were to identify a few areas to set as a goal for the course of the either year or the next couple of years.
Jody, could you speak up, please?
Yeah, the, I'm sorry, the committee itself was to, in the next meeting, decide what are the top priorities for the district, over range of topics that the committee members identified. I don't know if this would be one of them, but it could certainly be raised.
Yeah, I would suggest maybe bringing it up at the, because I know Catherine, you're on the committee, at the meeting, and seeing if that seems like it's the appropriate place. And if not, then we can revisit it.
When you say a committee, what are you looking, to look at the goals? Is that what, I'm not sure what you're asking for, so I want to be clear before-
Sure, yeah, I think that's, I think that's great. And I think that a committee of interested stakeholders specifically to identify what are some of the questions, because one of the things, this is something that we've been hearing a lot about this evening and in advance of the presentation, and the community at large. And so I think getting stakeholders together to identify if we're going to look at the program, some of those parameters. Do we want to look at what the goals are? Do we want to look at what the number of actions? I mean, I could come up with a number of different parameters to explore on the fly. I don't know if this is the appropriate venue for that. If, and if it is, I'd be happy to brainstorm on that here.
So I just want to ask a question of where, where the line is, Jody. Like, this seems to be a program that we've enjoyed having in the school over the years, based on the longevity of it, feedback from kids and parents over the years. And this is, this is a subset. And stakeholders that usually get involved are ones that maybe are not happy with the program. Is this a program that you want to continue in the program? And the goal would be to talk about, hey, are we achieving what we want the SROs to achieve? Because I don't want it to be like a meeting where we're, are determining whether or not we're keeping SROs, because I think that decision has been made by the administration to have SROs. Is that correct, or?
Well, the agreement is between the town and the district. So we have an agreement through 2022.
Okay.
I think, you know, the question of, if you have a committee, it's like, what's the purpose of a committee?
Yeah.
And I think the, you know, in, I mentioned that the district was not part of the town committee, although Supervisor Van Luven did come and meet with Mr. DeMell, myself, Mr. Klugman. And when this came up, I asked, what's the concern? Because in the time I've been in the district, I've not had any concerns brought to me, either as principal, assistant superintendent, or superintendent, about the SROs from any parents or students or staff members. So I wasn't, I never got any answers to what exactly is the concern.
So I think, to be fair, and I know I'm the one that called for this to be an agenda item, not so much because of the national discussion, which there is, but because there was a lot of local discussion, and it was all focused to the town board. And there were a number of very heated meetings, there was a committee put together, there's a report with a lot of very specific suggestions about what the school district should consider. But it wasn't directed to the school board, because that wasn't the committee that was doing the work. So I felt that it was incredibly important that we provide the community the opportunity to address the appropriate body about their same concerns, and to have an internal discussion here about whether or not the recommendations of that committee are something we want to explore further as the body responsible for having the SRO program and the DARE program in the school district. Not because I honestly have any formed opinion one way or the other, because I thought it was worth having a discussion. And there are a number of very specific recommendations and questions that have already, the work, a lot of that work has been done, and there's a plan for what a committee here could consider. And maybe it's not a committee, maybe it's us. I just think the point is been reiterated over and over again that a group of middle-aged, white school board members might not have the diverse opinion and experience needed to do that deep dive that might be warranted. It doesn't mean the outcome is any different, but something worth thinking about.
I would certainly agree with Willow that it is worth exploring and having a committee go through the police reform report, the committee that was, the report that was generated, and look at their suggestions, and look at what we can do as a district to make the program better, and something that's, that's a stronger program. I can tell you, I know the program has probably changed much from the time when my children had it. But my kids would come home and say, tell me, you know, they thought the program was a joke. It was great to get out of the regular class. But basically, you know, they're telling us, don't do drugs, but Dad, I can, I can tell you where you can buy anything. You know, this kid has this, this kid's over here before school selling this.
In fifth grade, that's what they were telling you? That's when the DARE program is given?
Yeah.
They were telling you where kids could buy drugs in fifth grade?
That's correct. And it was Ben, Leo was somewhere else at that time. But when Ben got to the high school, it was the same thing. And it was, you know, I understand there are certain limitations as to what the administration can do as far as looking in lockers and stuff like that. But basically, when I would have, when we would have at the house, a bunch of kids over, and my son would have a fire pit or whatever in the back, and they would talk, it was amazing to me how much they knew, much more than I did, about where you could get stuff. And I thought it was appalling. And at the time, when I reached out to people, I was basically told it was very limited as to what the school could do. I never thought the DARE program was effective. I'm not surprised that we've been told tonight that there are studies that show how ineffective it is. Doesn't surprise me at all. I haven't seen a study that shows that it is effective. I'd like to see something like that. I would like to see if it's not effective, if that's in fact true. I'd like to see a program that is effective. I'm not supporting drug use by any stretch by saying this. I'm supporting the idea of a program that actually gets kids to recognize why they should not be using drugs. Not because they'll be branded whatever, but because it's not healthy. So I think the idea of having a committee to look at the recommendations that have been made is, is a very good idea and something that we should explore. If it means that the DARE program stays because that's the better program, fine. If it means it goes, then it goes and we put something else in. Same thing about the SROs. I am, I have never been comfortable having police officers in school. There are too many ways in which we have criminalized behavior of students when it's unnecessary. And I'll give you a perfect example. When my uncle was going to school, and this goes back a while, he and his friends on the night of a championship game, went to the other team's field and painted the bleachers, wood bleachers, with their team colors. Painted and dry, kids were found out. And the kids spent the weekend repainting the bleachers. Didn't get criminal records. They had to use their own money, they had to buy the paint, they had to buy the brushes, they had to dress appropriately for the job, and they came and they did it. Now, that takes parents to participate and make sure it's done. But today, you paint a school bleacher somewhere that has school's colors, you paint it, period. Chances are, you're going to get referred to the police for destruction of school property. It's possible that that was a lesson that these kids learned and, and experienced and learned from. I know my uncle did.
There's never, since I've been here in 20 years and eight years on the school board, not one complaint has come from a parent regarding any action that an SRO has done inappropriately in the district. So I love the examples from the National Report, but they have to be applicable to our school. And they're not. So I know instances where the resource officers have actually helped a student instead of proceeding with criminal charges. So it's the opposite effect, because they live and work in this community. There is a benefit to having a presence here to say that maybe, hey, one mistake isn't going to make you arrested and a felon. So-
Well, they don't need a gun to do that. Maybe the idea of a police, of a peace officer is something that we should seriously consider.
Is it the parents, or is this the students are saying they're uncomfortable? Because I think, I think we need to make sure that the issue is, how do the students feel about a presence of an SRO in the school?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And I think, I want to make sure, I want to make sure I'm being perfectly, like, that I'm communicating as clearly as I can, excuse me. I am not, I'm not bringing any complaint of any activity or any action from our SROs. I'm not, there's, I have not heard that either. However, in a district where we've got a strategic plan with 61 metrics, 70, it started out at 72, so-
They're down to 50.
53. 53.
Two hours to say 52.
We have goals, we have outcomes that we're looking for when we have programs in our, in our schools.
Yes.
And we have had really great questions raised about what are our goals, what are we working toward, and are the tools we're using the right ones to achieve those goals? Those questions, I think, deserve some good-
Absolutely.
-investigation and, and querying. And I think that with stakeholders, including our counselors, including our SROs, including our administration, like, again, I could brainstorm here. But getting stakeholders together, and I think, I think the DEI committee is a great place to start. I also think this goes beyond that, because I think it points to what Christine is saying, which is, like, how do our students feel? What kind of surveys can we get back? What kind of input can we get to make sure that this program is living up to high standards? And that, and that it's got goals, and that it's working towards something. Because I think in the absence of that, and in the absence of having concrete goals and, and performance metrics to put it toward, people are able to imagine that this is a police-to-prison pipeline pathway. And I don't hear that in what you're saying. And so we need to make sure, in order to not fall into that trap, or into that perceived trap, that we've got ways of defining what the program purpose is.
So, and I think it does come back to some of the, looking at some of the recommendations in the town report, some of which were related to conducting some surveys of the school community.
Sure.
I did have, I had a couple of questions for our presenters. I know there was some, you were detailing some of the training that the SROs go through. And I just wanted to ask whether the SROs get any specific training with respect to implicit bias, anti-racism, anything along those lines, whether that's part of the training curriculum?
So the Town of Bethlehem employees receive that training through Human Resources. So implicit bias, sexual harassment, training courses of that source are provided by Human Resources in the Town of Bethlehem, which is given to the school resource officers in the home base of the police department.
Okay, thank you.
And I just would like to make one other comment, just in my personal thought, and so everybody understands where my heart is in this. I'm not here to advocate for this program or not, even though I find it very valuable. I'm just here to basically speak from what I'm going to say to you, is that the main purpose and goal that I feel is that that me being in this school is not to be a security officer with a gun that walks around and patrols the hallway. The reason why I believe that my presence here is important is the exchange of information that I bring from the community to the administrators, to the social workers, the counselors, the teachers, that provide them with information, the things that go on in the community, to bridge that gap, to be able to have communication that works in the best interest of making the students here feel comfortable and safe in their school and in their home. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I had a question. I'm not sure if, Darnell, are you still here?
He's still here.
Yep. He's still here.
So you're hiding behind a post, from my perspective. I just had a quick question for you, and I can wait until you- Okay. You commented on how the SROs have been involved-
You commented on how the SROs have been involved in, with you, in dealing with students that are having a mental health crisis. And I was just wondering if you could elaborate on, from your perspective as a counselor, on how that's helpful for you?
Okay, perfect, yes. That's a great question. So I guess I'll give you an example to, to make my point. A few months ago, we had a student that, without giving too much detail, because I don't want to relieve this, give that student's information. They were in a crisis, and they had wrote on the chat that they were going to kill themselves. Right? I wasn't aware of that because it happened after school hours. That next morning I came in, I had come, said hello to Mike Thurbin, and he said, "Hey, Darnell, here's what came in last night." So I said, "Okay, I'll look into it." And we spent at least two hours, at least two hours trying to track this student down. Right? We were able to find out who that student was. We contacted their house, and the parents didn't believe that that was their student. So we did some more digging, another hour. So three hours in total, we found out that the person that I actually called was the correct family. And then they didn't realize that their child was in crisis, and because of what Mike Thurbin was able to do, he was able to get to the house and make sure that student was evaluated so that way they didn't commit suicide. So when I say that we have a relationship, that's really what it's about. Because I know Mike Thurbin, he's able to give me information so that way I can do my job more effectively as a school counselor. Because if I didn't have that information, there's a possibility that could have gone days without me knowing how to connect with the student, and that student possibly could have died. Right? So this is why I said, I'm not saying we need one or we don't need one, but we have to talk about how we have better relationships. And if we don't have relationships with people that can give us information, then how can we do our job more effectively? Does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, I have one more thing to say. From my own experience, my own son could have been one of those people who had charges pressed against them, right? But because I had a relationship with Detective Rightley, with Detective Rice, they were able to investigate a situation where my son was not charged because they were being accused of something that they did not do. Right? It's all about relationship people. Right? Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith, I wasn't sure if you had any questions, and I wanted to make sure you had a chance if you did.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you to everyone presenting today. And thank you to the SROs for giving us more information about what you do. And I'm sure that the, when I'm speaking out loud, I say that SROs want to make sure that they are serving the school in the most effective way possible, as well as community members want to make sure of that. So to that point, I do think it's, it's important that we do look at the data. To Catherine's point, at our last meeting, we did a strategic plan update, and it gave us such a clear view on how we're doing and our goals, where we're going. And it does make sense to apply the same procedure here, to make sure that we know the, the goals of the SRO program, and to see how we're achieving the goal, those goals, and whether or not we should be achieving them in a different manner, or whether or not they are successful. To Willow's point, we have the town, the town report, which, thank you to everyone who participated in that, I'm sure it was a tremendous undertaking. And they have an entire section that we can essentially just look at and say, okay, these are things that people who really did a deep dive into this feel like we should be evaluating, you know, the data points that we should be evaluating, the number of referrals and how those referrals went. So I think that it's important that we, that we take those evaluations, those recommendations, and put them into something such as the strategic plan update measurements. I think that, I believe it was Willow who was talking about that. And I really do think that it's appropriate so that we all make sure that we're serving the school in the best way possible.
Thanks, Meredith.
Wendy, did you have any questions?
Well, I just want to give a little kind of summary of everything that's kind of taken place in this little bit of a discussion that we've been having this evening. Definitely, we should look at the recommendations. We should definitely survey our students. And we should also maybe try to quantify some of the value that the program, I believe, has brought to the schools over the past many, many, many years. It's always changing. You were saying that the DARE education program has changed over the years, and that will, that's the nature of education. It changes. Things are definitely in motion constantly. And, and we also need to look at our, at our community's relationship with the police and where that separation is that was on the slide, you know? Definitely, the school handles a lot of things, and then there's, there's the other part that gets handled by the police. And I think there is a, a need for a definitely clear separation of that. I also do worry about the gun situation. I know that that's a safety issue that, that the community has, and we can certainly look at that and those recommendations. But I, I think there is a lot of value in having the different curriculum pieces that the, that the SROs bring to the, the other programs, the other classes that weren't mentioned. The social studies classes and the participation in government classes and things that, you know, are at the high school level and at the middle school level that didn't get as much focus as the DARE program did. And I, I think the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee is a good place to start. I'm on that. Willow's on that. Catherine's on that. And I just think that we can certainly get some things together and start looking at all of these. It often seems like it's a huge task, but I think if we, you know, set a couple of clear goals, you know, we, we can figure it out and, and inform the process a little bit better as we go along.
Thanks, Wendy. And Jody, just to refresh my memory, I think, is it in January, maybe, we have a presentation scheduled relating to wellness, the K-12 Wellness Committee?
We have one. I don't know what, I can't remember the day of it, though.
Because I, I mean, that would be a good time to have some information coming back, I think, to the board on, you know, how the, you know, the DARE program or whatever we're going to go forward with, where we're at with that, to bring that back.
Not to change subjects, but it's nine o'clock, and PIG students are just a reminder.
Yes, reminder, yes.
They have perfume.
Thank you. Just very quickly, does anybody have any additional comments or questions or anything on this, on the presentation?
Yeah. Who's going to set what the agenda is for the diversity inclusion meeting?
We have, Dave and I have a call with Harriet tomorrow.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure that we're not covering, like, eight zillion things when maybe you're looking at the program overview first.
The, the, when I said the, or Holly, when she mentioned that, that committee, the committee is going to decide what the initiatives are, that they are, want to prioritize. I think at the last meeting, she suggested two or three for the group. So we have a call with her tomorrow, and she's going to follow up with her plans for the next meeting.
And to Christine's concerns, if this is outside of the scope of that or beyond what that committee was
Right. Then we can take it from there.
Yeah, exactly.
It was just a suggestion that it might be a good place to start.
Absolutely. I think you're, yeah, I totally agree.
If nobody has any other comments or questions on the presentation, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming tonight and for providing the presentation and the information. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we're going to take just two minutes. I don't know how many PIG students might be out there. I see a couple. If you guys want to come up, if you need a signature, come up to any of the board members and get a signature, and then you guys can leave. and give a signature, and then you guys can leave.